I'd like to call the Community Economic Development Committee. It order, please. Roll call.
Alderman Suback. Alderman Coles. Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Knype. Alderman Pizik. Alderman Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Shockey.
Here.
Alderman Tolemy.
Here. Being a roll call, or being quorum president, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of February 8th, 2007.
A move. Second.
And question? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. First item we have tonight is a report and recommendation. This is on the homeownership initiative. And at this time, I'd like to ask the city manager Frank Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeff Mirmas, our Assistant City Managers at the Illinois City Managers Association in Peoria, so I'm going to present the introduction on his report. He and Ross Clicker have been working on this with the two gentlemen I'm going to introduce. In March 2006, the DuPage Homeowners Home Ownership Center, a non-for-profit certified housing counseling agency convened a symposium called the Home Ownership Benchmark for a Vital Community. This was in cooperation with the DuPage County Board to help increase public awareness of the housing needs of working families, senior citizens, and first-time homebuyers throughout DuPage County. As an outgrowth of that homeownership initiative, the Northeast Illinois Chapter of the American Institute of Architects volunteered to assist the DuPage Home Ownership Center by conducting a series of charrettes, which basically are a kind of design forum for developing design solutions to community issues and a way to study how to incorporate creative mixed-density housing solutions into multiple locations throughout the county. The American Institute of Architects is celebrating its 150th birthday in 2007. As part of that celebration, the American Institute of Architects is promoting all chapters to participate in a public service program called Blueprint for America. This program urges these architects to work collaboratively with government officials, business leaders, and residents to define and advocate a shared vision for a healthier, safer, and more dynamic communities. The DuPage Home Ownership Center charrettes were chosen by the American Institute of Architects were chosen by the American Institute of Architects as their civic contribution to Blueprint for America. In response to a request by Jeff Mirmas and Ross Clicker, our Economic Development Assistant, the city of Wood Dale was selected for one of the, as one of the first to join the DuPage Home Ownership Center and the American Architects Study. The area designated for the workshop will be Georgetown Apartment and Shopping Center area. Members of both these organizations will be giving this presentation and answering questions about the proposed program. There are no costs associated with this program, and one of the major reasons Wood Dale was selected was that it presents a real opportunity for the project to go beyond the charrette conceptual planning stage. Staff is recommending participation with these two agencies in their program for this homeowners initiative. At this time, I'd like to introduce Paul Colgan, representing the DuPage Home Ownership Center, and John Darnowski from the American Institute of Architects, who will do a short presentation.
Good evening, everyone. And we'll try not to take up too much of your time tonight, but my job, I'm again Paul Colgan, and I chair the charrette subcommittee of this task force that was formed by the DuPage Home Ownership Center. And first, I want to give you a little bit of an introduction about how we got to where we are right now and why this opportunity to work with Wood Dale has evolved to the point it is, and we hope to work with you in the future. But first of all, let me explain, the DuPage Home Ownership Center is really focused on, well, first of all, it's a nonprofit agency that works in a public-private partnership. This thing doesn't go as fast as my presenter, so I apologize. I'll just do them all. But it has wide support in the county. It works with lenders, realtors, the county government, and other private funding agencies. And it's really, it's focused on increasing the amount of homeownership in DuPage County, helping more people to own a home. And the emphasis is on first-time homebuyers and low-to-moder income buyers, because those are the people that are usually having the toughest time to get into the marketplace. But they offer, to make that dream possible, they offer free services such as homebuyer education, individual counseling, special programs, again, for first-time homebuyers, foreclosure, help people in credit problems, and also they have a very good focus on helping seniors who want to stay in their homes in our community. But a year ago, they convened a task force, Home Ownership Benchmark for a Vital Community. And that the mission of that group, which I'm a part of, was to increase the awareness of DuPage housing needs. I mean, we have a lot of working families, senior citizens, first-time homebuyers that need homes, and so we want to get them out of rental situations and put them into their own home. And this affordability task force, which again, I'm a part of, we brought together local officials, community leaders, people from the housing industry, employers, a wide variety of individuals to talk about the need and issue of housing in DuPage. And we worked on a variety of things, everything from the public perception of what the housing needs are in DuPage County, to issues of what's the barriers to creating more housing, mixed housing, to the cost of construction, to the zoning issues, and the other issues that all kind of impact on how we deliver housing. The most important thing is, is we didn't want to develop a nice little book. We wanted to show, not tell. We wanted to act, not talk. And so part of our mission is come out of this work, this affordability task force, to look for opportunities where we can address key issues. My particular issue that I was focused on was construction and land costs. And we were asking the question, why does housing cost so much to build new housing in DuPage County? So we focused on some of those issues. And out of that... Help me out here. Okay, I just, it's like my remote control at home, you gotta point it, I guess. But most importantly, we wanted to look at ways to find cost-driven alternatives to subsidies for building houses. We wanted to get market-based solutions. We wanted the market to deliver houses that people wanted to buy. We wanted to find the barriers in the local building codes and the zoning laws that stopped you from really creating good housing markets. But most importantly, we wanted to find practical ways of doing this. We didn't want to have theoretical ways. We wanted to have practical ways. Our recommendations that came out of my committee were, let's look at the big picture. Let's challenge the conventional thinking. Let's demonstrate, however, the value of quality, low-cost housing with real-life examples. Again, let's not talk about it, let's do it. We also wanted to show how the market can respond. Most importantly, we wanted to work with builders out there who could deliver a good product and make a profit at it, and deliver a good-quality home that's good for the community. But most importantly, what came out of that committee that I worked on was the need for inspired design and innovative construction, ways that we can address some of these housing issues so that we don't, not that we're going to be in cookie-cutter boxes, but we come up with some creative ways of providing the housing needs in our communities. And one of the things that came out of this process was the AIA Northeast Illinois Chapter, the American Institute of Architects, they have their own project, which you'll hear about, their Project 150, where they wanted to get involved in communities. And so they offered to work with us on doing these charrettes, which you'll hear some more about in a little bit. I'm also working with the University of Notre Dame School of Architecture. They have committed to come to DuPage County in 2008 to use one of their undergraduate studio projects here in DuPage County. I'm also in conversations with the Illinois Institute of Technology School of Architecture and the University of Illinois School of Architecture, again, utilizing their brain power that's in our universities to come to our communities to work with, again, communities like Wood Dale to address some of your housing needs and try to, again, come up with practical ways of delivering housing in the best possible way for the community. And we're talking to some other communities at this time to do the same thing that we are offering to do here in Wood Dale. At this point, I'd like to turn it over, well, I'm sorry, I forgot one other thing. Most important thing for us, we wanted to have real projects with real needs. Again, we didn't want to talk theory. We didn't want to be theoretical. We wanted to say, here's a real project, here's a real need, here's a real problem, let's solve it. We wanted, as I said here, we wanted to have professional advice, but most importantly, we wanted community involvement. We want to work with communities who want to, to work with us in a collaborative way to try to solve some of your housing issues. And at this point, I'd like to introduce John Darnowski with PHN Architects, who is the Project 150 Coordinator for the AIA Northeast Illinois.
Thank you, Paul. As Paul mentioned, my name's John Darnowski. I'm a principal with PHN Architects in Wheaton, Illinois. Most importantly today, I am also a representative of AIA Northeast Illinois. I'm the 2007 President-elect. I will be President of the organization next year, and this year I am designated as the AIA 150 Champion, which I'll relate to you in just a moment. AIA Northeast Illinois is actually, the American Institute of Architects is a three-tiered organization. There's a national component, there's a state component, and there is a local component. The state of Illinois has, I believe, six local components. AIA Northeast Illinois is a chapter of approximately 500 members, which includes all of DuPage County, Kane County, Pendle County, and parts of suburban Cook County, which are north of I-55 and west of the city of Chicago. So all the architects in our chapter are familiar with DuPage County and either work or live in this area. This year also happens to be the 150th anniversary of the American Institute of Architects. Because of that, the American Institute of Architects is looking at promoting a national program called Blueprint for America, in which each of the local components provides a community service program or two, which will help make these communities healthier, safer, and more dynamic places to live. So we're trying to, as our 150th birthday, we're trying to give back to our communities. We came together with the DuPage Home Ownership Center at the symposium last March and then again in November. Our involvement from this point on is that we have offered to conduct a series of charrettes, which will help incorporate mixed-density housing solutions into different types of locations throughout DuPage County. So we're actively out there looking for areas where we can try to provide housing solutions in communities that are looking for a more creative way to provide housing to their residents. An explanation of what a charrette actually is, I'm sure that some of you are wondering what that means. A charrette is a workshop. It's, in this case, it's a design workshop in which we would sit down with stakeholders in the community and other design professionals, community groups, community leaders, and so on, to try to form, try to solve a problem. That problem being looking at ways to provide housing in this community in a specific location that's a little bit more creative than... Try to solve a problem, basically. And what we're looking to do is provide a clear vision for and a solution to that housing problem. Not that there necessarily is a problem, but a different way to provide housing here. We're looking to create a safer and a healthier community through this process, which involves all the residents of Wood Dale.
You mean the problem you're seeing because of the rising housing costs?
Rising housing costs.
Why don't you use the word affordable, then? I guess, you're trying to find a way to get more affordable housing for Wood Dale.
That could be one way to phrase it, yes.
Okay.
The results of this charrette are that we hope to have graphics, a site plan, perspective images, and a supporting narrative, which helps provide this vision for your community, which will assist with community development guidelines, which may have some recommendations for your proposed new zoning ordinance, and will also provide a sense of ownership and a sense of community pride in the solutions that are developed at the charrette itself. Any questions?
Alderman Coles?
You talked about... I guess I... You talked about engineering. Do you, how advanced engineering you're going to? I mean, as far as on houses and areas.
I didn't actually speak about engineering itself. What we're looking to do is provide, we may come up with, we may not be designing each of the individual units.
You're talking about designs.
Correct. We're talking about designs.
Well, design is part of engineering, part of the engineering field. It's designing the, engineering the building, or engineering whatever you're going to build. There should be somebody that, when you have these students from Notre Dame and Illinois and Northeastern, and them come in, they should have some sort of idea of what you want them to do or what they can come up with.
Let me jump in on that. There's two parts to what we're doing. And what John is doing is the first part, which is more of a design workshop. We can say, conceptually, what can happen? What are some of the possibilities? It'll be creative. It will look at some of the engineering aspects of it, but it really won't get into the detailed design of it. Later on, if you choose to be part of one of the programs, whether it's Notre Dame or another group, then you would get into that specific engineering issue.
Yeah, but...
So there's two parts to it. This is first, a kind of a workshop, and then the later one is the actual design exercise.
You're asking these students, some of these students must have some kind of idea what they want to design.
Yes.
All right?
Yes.
So I mean, if, that's part of the deal. That's part of it.
Let me explain the charrette a little bit. The charrette is a six-hour workshop, which will include licensed architects, landscape architects, planners, others, real estate developers, builders, and so on, who will sit down with people in the community, take a look at how to provide this housing. Now, before we start with that, we will work with staff to come up with kind of a, kind of a program, you would call it. How many types of housing, what type of square footage, what type of amenities would be there, so that when we're looking at something, we're looking at a realistic solution to, say, 40 housing units or 50 housing units, you know, two-bedroom, this size, so that we're actually working with a real program and coming up with a viable solution.
Okay.
Now, this is just at a conceptual level. You're not going to wind up having full construction or permit drawings based on this process.
Alderman Suback?
Either one of you can answer, and thank you for coming tonight. How do you foresee your goal and mission interacting with making sure we're protecting the existing homeowners' property values? Because...
Part of the idea is, is that I think that we were hoping to focus in, I think the target area is a combination of commercial and housing, and the housing is rental housing, I believe, now. And so part of what we're trying to do is go towards homeownership.
Right.
Which would raise the value, just doing that. But also, we, obviously, one of the most important things would be, is how do you integrate yourself into the neighborhood? How do you, you know, how do you improve the neighborhood? And how do you achieve the goals that the community wants for the neighborhood?
Because what, what we've seen for Wood Dale, we're basically built out, and what's really left is like what they call infolots. And we've actually seen, you know, the large builders of Polte and Lennar, who are all building out west and down south, they're actually been coming back and looking at smaller parcels in Wood Dale that they, 15, 10 years ago, they wouldn't have ever bothered with because they were too small. And the perfect example, I could have you gentlemen drive by and staff get you the address, but we had the, where Lennar built over on, I think, Potter and Montrose, it was an old industrial building. And when they first came to us, they started with saying that we wanted 72 townhouses in that area, and the density, it was through the roof. I think it was probably eight acres total. And we basically said, look, you're across the street from houses that are 750, you know, all-brick houses. We don't want to have, and they wanted to do townhouses that were, you know, aluminum siding or hardy board, and that they wanted to get them at, you know, a price point of, you know, probably $250,000 and less. And what our fear of a council was, that we didn't want to hurt the existing housing values in that area. So we started telling them, look, you're going to have to do, you know, more of a mix. Some townhouses would be okay in a transition area, but we wanted some single-family houses. Then they showed us single-family house designs, and they were more of that cookie-cutter style, that I'm sure drives the architects crazy. And we didn't want that, because again, we were worried about the existing home values, because though some of the houses over there might be 700,000 or 800,000, some might have been 400 or 450. And what, at least, my fear was that if we have new houses going in there that are in a range of 500,000, you're going to hurt that person whose existing home value is 500, because they'll never be able to sell it for more than a new home, because the new home and existing home are somewhat different. So in the area that you're looking at there, if the long-term goal is some type of either condo conversion or townhouse area, I would hope that the group is looking at the existing values of some of the townhouses, for example, in Georgetown Square, Orchard Square, of what the values are. And even if it's going to be affordable housing, it still has to be more money than the existing housing there, otherwise you will kill the existing market in that area.
You know, I would have to say that without participation from the community in this process, this won't be a successful process. We're looking to engage you. We're looking to have you and the community come to this process and sit down so that we can understand exactly what these concerns are and design a solution that not only fits the neighborhood, fits what your vision of Wood Dale will be. So this isn't something where we want to come in and impose our thoughts.
Sure. You know, that would be one of my major concerns, is making sure, whatever the design is for that area, is that we're not hurting the existing home values, that the new ones have to be more money. The only way we've really done, pushed builders to do that, is we start requiring more brick on the houses and more stone on these PUDs, where we have a little bit of control, trying to get these price points up, because otherwise, the Lennar and the Polte, they want to come in, sell as many as they can, and move on, and they're not worried about what that looks like, that townhouse looks like in three, four, five, six, 10 years.
We want you to be very proud of the design. Whatever we design, or whatever they do, we want you to be proud of it. So that's part of the process here, and that's part of what we're trying to say about the show and don't tell. I mean, actually do the work and do that, that difficult, or pose those questions so that we can address them in the best way we know how. And again, it's dialogue.
I have a question, actually more of a comment. I think as I'm understanding it, we can work with your group, and your group would work with us, and we could just, I mean, there's, there's no guarantee that anything would ever move forward on this, but at least we could get an idea of what we could do with that area. I mean, I understand Alderman Suback's concern, but I also believe that where a lot of communities today are pricing out rental homes, okay, or they're, you know, or apartments and things like that, and changing them over to condos, that you're really forcing a lot of people out of just being able to live, because a lot of people, no matter what you do, aren't going to be able to afford, you know, a home. So, I mean, and I understand, like, property values are important to everybody, but I also understand that if you have a developer come in and they build $750,000 homes in a, you know, in a $250,000 neighborhood, you know, you've just hurt everybody in that in that area anyway. Okay? You know, and I guess my biggest concern, my, what I would say is that we, I think we should go forward with this and at least go through the steps and sit down and talk about what could we do, what would it bring to the city, and would we be able to accomplish the things that we want to accomplish as far as having affordable housing for people? I mean, one of the, one of the comments I've heard from people is that, you know what, my kids are getting older, you know, they'd love Wood Dale, they'd like to live in Wood Dale, but you know what? They can't afford to buy a house here anymore. And I think we have to be able to put ourselves in a position where we can afford, or they can afford, some type of housing to live, to live in the city, continue to live in the city.
That's part of our challenge, if I may. We're, through innovative design, you know, thoughtful engineering, try to utilize some of the best technology in construction to be able to meet that challenge, but yet still meet the challenge of the neighborhood. I mean, that is, it's a difficult challenge, it's a difficult problem, but we have some of the best and the brightest in the design industry who want to come here and try.
Right.
And that's something very few communities ever do. And I think that's what is so good about this program, and that's why we're so excited.
Well, I think the best thing about the program, to be honest with you, is that it's not going to cost us a dime. So, you know, from my perspective, that's great, when you can get professional input, you know, that is going to come in and help the city, you know, because, in all honesty, we have a lot of different areas within our city that, that, you know, things need to happen, and, you know, as time goes on, I mean, things need to change, but we have to make sure that we're not doing it in a vacuum, okay? That we are looking, and we are making sure that, number one, we do protect the residents we have here, because, you know, that's key. That's key, that we protect them, we protect their property values. So I guess, at this time, I asked Frank, you...
Yes, at this time, I'd just like to mention that this group looked at a couple locations in Wood Dale. One of them was the trailer park, you know, redeveloping that, that area into a better area. And one of the areas was the Georgetown area. And they kind of liked the Georgetown area because we have that area of apartments that, basically, the infrastructure is in 60s vintage, it needs to be replaced, and it got various owners of those rental places. We received numerous complaints of people who live in those places about the problems with, with the infrastructure, the sewers and everything like that, and these people would like to live in Wood Dale, and that's the only thing they can get. So we were looking at that area, and they liked that idea, and also, we'd like to come up some, with some ideas on how we can revitalize the Georgetown Shopping Center area. What they would recommend as far as redoing that area, because again, that was built in the 60s as well.
Right.
And that would go, fit right into the new area with the townhomes and the adjacent single-family homes. And I don't know if Russ wants to say anything further, and this is why we chose that area.
Right. That's, I would just like to expand just a little bit further on why this area was focused in on, and it is because of its proximity to shopping, the proximity to transportation, the proximity to local schools, and the age of its infrastructure. This is an area with the age of the infrastructure, with the age of the buildings that we hope to have, that we're asking them to focus in on, the age of the buildings, the type of building that is there, the likelihood that the owners in there are going to be looking to do some form of redevelopment is fairly high. So we'd like to make sure that we have a comprehensive plan, a comprehensive concept that we can work with people with to say, this is the vision that we see for this area. Work with us, please.
Alderman Wesley?
I think it's a good idea to move forward with this organization to see what we have to offer out there, and I agree with Marshall in some respect to that, due to the fact that we just built that new townhouse division across behind Georgetown, and I, you know, I don't know what those were going for, I forgot, but I still recommend that we go forward and work with them, attract staff to work with them, and continue to see what we can do with that area. Because I agree, those apartment buildings are pretty much eyesore right now, and I used to live in one, so I'll tell you that for a fact. So I would do a recommendation that we move forward with it.
One other question.
Alderman Suback?
Because there are the new ones right across the street, as part of your analysis, you would be looking at what those sold for, and as far as what other ones sold in the area, because, again, my own... Because again, my own, I think it's great that you're going to do this and there's no harm in moving forward. But if I was an individual, bought one of those townhouses across the street for, last summer, for 300,000 or 320, and then there's new ones going up that are maybe exactly the same, but because of some type of grants, or because of some type, somebody else paying for the infrastructure or county participation, now that same townhouse is 200,000, how can you look at the person who bought the one for 300,000 and say, welcome to Wood Dale? They've got to be at least the same price, if not more, otherwise you're hurting the existing resident that already lives here in Wood Dale.
Our challenge is to have a mix of housing. I mean, our challenge will be, we've got senior citizens, our challenge will be first-time home buyers, our challenge will be also to have housing that fits the area. So, we may have a range of housing possibilities. I mean, again, we don't know yet what the results will be. It really depends on the input we get from you, the input we get from the community, and really what the experts can come up with in this design exercise. But it's, we hope, part of our mission is try to have a good range of housing. So, the senior citizens have a place to go to, as well as the young families, as well as the people who are empty nesters that maybe want to get out of their big house and go to a smaller house. And I mean, there's a lot of amenities right there between the shopping and the, and there's a town, I'm not sure what is it, a townhome or other stuff, there's a, an association community right there. I mean, there's a lot of things you could tie into right there to make that site very attractive for some opportunity that's not there now. So, we want to try to do, we want to do a mix of things.
Would, can I ask you, would one of the things that you would look at, would it be senior housing? Or are you talking, you're talking solely about owner, ownership?
Right now, we're talking about ownership, but...
Because one of, one of the things that we need in this community today, okay, is we need, we do need senior housing. And when I talk senior housing, I'm talking about we need both assisted and non-assisted. You know, a place for, you know, our seniors to go, because as you said, you know, we do have a lot of seniors in our community who are getting to the point where it's too much for them to take care of their homes anymore. And, but they love this community, and we'd like to keep them in the community. So, you know, if there's a way, that could be part of it.
Well, you know, it's many ways, what you tell the designers and what, what ideas they can come from their experience.
Okay. Well, then, on Alderman Wesley's, was he on a motion? I'll second it. Anybody else have a question? Okay, all in favor? Aye. So, motion is to go forward with it. Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you, we look forward to working with you.